Good evening, everyone. Welcome to everyone and to our fellow board member Kara Benjamin, who is dialing in on Zoom this evening. Hello. Quick review of the agenda. Let's first start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kokarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
We note all members present. Quick review of the agenda. We will start off with communication and an invitation for public comment. We have a teachers' union report. We have our student school board representative oath of office and reports. We will review FOIA requests and discuss some good news. We will move on to our consent vote agenda. As a reminder, our consent vote includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion. These are things that we approve routinely and we discuss thoroughly in committee, which happens on the second Monday of every month. All the documentation for those items are in the board packet and available for review for transparency. We have, for action this evening, some employment of employees. We will discuss the approval of a platform add-on to our Power School software. We will also vote on the Imagine Learning online platform. We have a bid approval for a long-awaited truck purchase that our finance department has been working on for quite a while. And we will finalize our superintendent annual goals for 23, this school year, the 23-24 school year. Moving on to items for discussion. We will discuss a draft of the new district strategic communications plan. We will review our fiscal year 23 site-based expenditure report. And we will discuss our capital project process. For information, we will have a superintendent's report. Do we have an IASB report? We do have an IASB report tonight. I know we also have a seat-all report. Do we have any other reports to discuss? Okay. Seeing none, we will have a quick review of our future agenda items in addition to what is listed in the packet. And we will, after we are done with that, we will move to adjourn the meeting. So I would like to start with an invitation for public comment and ask Mr. John Hetzel to the podium for his three-minute public comment.
Good evening. Recently, oh, John Hetzel, my daughter's a sophomore here and I have an eighth grader that'll be here next year. So I'm very much vested in this education platform we have here. Recently, on August 15th, I sent an email to the Board of Education, the principal and the superintendent. This email was comprised by myself but with input from many, many other parents in the district and some faculty from the district as well, believe it or not. Because of the limitation on the freedom of speech imposed here to three minutes, that email was sent with several questions that need answers. Please respond because they are very real concerns among many, many parents in this community, including myself and my family. If no response, then, you know, we can always open up the email to the public forum and see what other people have to say at a much broader scale. Tonight, I want to address what has happened to our school's mission here. It has moved beyond prioritizing academic growth and now frequently includes the task of attempting to remedy many of society's most complicated and controversial social, moral, and cultural issues. The insertion of highly complex and invariably political issues into our schools has begun to crowd out the focus on academics and overwhelm the students. Major topics, no doubt important to the collective and civic health of our country, are now increasingly being contested in the classroom and the boardroom. For example, attempts to eliminate divergent academic performance outcomes between racial and socioeconomic groups, determining the parameters of speech, and prescribing moral, social codes, or implementing DEI, which is now being challenged as discriminatory after the recent SCOTUS affirmative action decision. Expecting schools to fix such complicated and expanding set of expectations has been largely unsuccessful, not because our administrators, teachers, students haven't been deeply engaged in their resolution, instead it's because our schools are not experts at nor fundamentally capable of effectively impacting economic, cultural, and ultimately familial forces that actually determine one's foundational development and classroom success. Board members, administrators, and teachers usually don't have combined sociology, psychology, psychiatric, physiology, biology, or anthropology degrees that make it possible to deliver learnings and understanding as complicated as the social ideology the district is now overwhelming the kids with daily. Lastly, in all of the Board of Education meetings I've attended here and in D-73 and 220, and all the videos I've watched on Board of Education meetings across the country, why is this school board meeting set up in an arrangement of essentially a horseshoe? With your backs to the community, parents and students, and also creating a wall between us. Now, I may be the lone soldier here today, but I am speaking for a lot of people. And if you do look at the way the arrangement is, the parents and students are usually over here, but there's a wall of people here with their back to them. And nobody's even looking at the constituents. So I'd like to know, if you don't believe that this is true, just Google "school board meetings," you will not find Board of Education meetings set up this way. From a sociology and psychology point of view--
Mr. Hetzel, that's three minutes, so I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Yep. It's being employed here. You all don't really face the constituents. So please respond to the questions here tonight and the emails sent. Myself and other parents in the community want answers. Thank you.
Okay, there is no one else that signed in for public comment. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to invite a representative from the teachers' union to the podium to address the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Kate Shanebeck, and I am vice president of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. Thank you so much for hearing me tonight. We are a union that represents 300-plus certified classroom and non-classroom educators in this district. We are proud to be a part of an organization that is dedicated to advocating for the rights and well-being of educators and, by extension, the quality of education our students receive. We are affiliated with the Lake County Federation of Teachers, the Illinois Federation of Teachers, and the American Federation of Teachers. These affiliations bolster our strength, which lies in our collective commitment to advocating for the interests of educators and staying informed about policy changes and educational best practices to ensure the success of both our teachers and our students. Our partnership with this school board is fortified by our collective bargaining agreement that remains in effect through May of 2025. In Article 1, Section L, the agreement states, "The president of the union," or designate me, "shall be accorded the privilege of addressing board meetings for a reasonable period of time allocated by the board upon request prior to the board meeting." I am pleased to speak with you tonight as a fulfillment of that section of our contract. As an integral part of our commitment to collaborate and communicate with the board, our union resolves to address the school board at each regular meeting. Our intention is to provide informative insights about our members and collective experiences as a group. We also anticipate asking general questions about the district's policies and decisions, though we understand that we won't receive an immediate response due to the format of the board meetings. We certainly will adhere to the second part of Article 1, Section L, that disallows discussion of collective bargaining or legal grievances. While we look forward to positive communications with district administrators at the Labor Management Committee and during all the informal conversations that happen on a regular basis, we recognize the value of establishing a direct line of communication with you, the school board. This forum allows us to offer a distinct perspective on pressing matters that directly affect our membership, to pose thoughtful questions to you to clarify details of the district's action plan, and share more about what we do and who we represent. In closing, we look forward to continuing our work together, and we appreciate the respectful way our request to speak to you has been accommodated tonight. We also want to take this opportunity to thank Casey Rooney for her service to the board and wish her well in her continued public service to the Village of Libertyville. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Moving on, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Herman to administer the oath of office for the student school board reps.
Yes. Would you like to join me?
Sure.
So I would like to have our student board reps, please join me. And I believe you have a copy in front of you. One of the things that we wanted to do this year is transition from the interview process where each of you were selected to this first meeting and making sure that the public understands the commitment that each of you are making to be representative to the Board of Education from your student body. We selected some of the oath of office that our elected board members are asked to fulfill for those that really apply to you as student board reps also. So similarly to how we apply the oath of office to our board members, I'd ask that each of you to stand. And first of all, for everyone who doesn't know who each of you are, if you could introduce your name and your school, and then we'll begin with the oath.
I'm Rukaya Almanshawi. I'm from Libertyville High School.
I'm Molly Neary. I'm from Libertyville High School.
I'm Louis Perry. I'm from Libertyville High School.
I'm Cora Boror, and I'm from Vernon Hills High School.
I'm Maya Ravell, and I'm from Vernon Hills High School.
And I'm Rukie Supramunyan, and I'm from Vernon Hills High School.
Wonderful. And congratulations to the principals and some of our board members who last spring selected this fine group. Thank you very much. And so we are going to get ready. And the very first one, so it says, "As a representative to the Board of Education, I shall..." And we will do our best to read these in unison, which is a challenge, but I know we can do it. So we shall accept--
Accept the responsibilities to represent the student body so that the Board of Education can make decisions that support the equitable and quality education of every student in D-128.
Next.
Foster meaningful communication between students, administrators, and the Board of Education and ensure a variety of student voices and perspectives shared at the board table. Attend monthly Board of Education meetings and present relevant and timely reports in coordination with my fellow student board representatives. Review the board meeting agenda prior to the meeting to ask clarifying questions in advance and bring relevant comments to the table related to the scheduled discussions. Report ideas that reflect the students of my school and not personal agendas. Be available to hear the ideas or questions from students at my school and relay them to the board when needed. Work closely with our principals to ensure student voices, the superintendent, and members of the Board of Education in leading the district towards achieving the district's daring mission strategic plan.
Nicely done.
That was awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Herman, and I would be delighted to turn it over to our student board reps for their first report.
I'm Rukaya Almanshawi, and I'm very excited to give my first board report. I'm very thankful for this opportunity to share students' voices, and I know that these reports are very valuable to make our school the best version of itself. Here's what's been going on these past few weeks. Clubs at LHS have been starting off very strong with new projects recruiting and planning school events. The freshman student council had their first meeting last Tuesday morning with about 20 ambitious students showing up ready to discuss plans for their first homecoming dance ever and learn how student council works. Best Buddies, a club where people build relationships with students with disabilities, also had their first meeting on Thursday with an impressive attendance of about 45 students, including the buddies, where they participated in speed dating and got to introduce themselves. In addition, LHS Leave, the environmental action club, is currently working on a fundraiser where they will be selling native plants in the school. Proceeds will go to restoration efforts in the courtyards and around campus. The Muslim Student Association, a club where Muslims at LHS get together as a community, also had their first meeting last week, where they played pictionary and introduced themselves. Overall, a great start to student involvement around the school as club recruitment continues to improve. Apart from these clubs, new ones are also being founded and starting up this month. Jewish Cultural Club, founded by seniors Caroline Trobe and Katherine Karonis, is for anyone who is interested in learning more about Jewish culture. Trobe said, "I realize there is a lack of representation for the people of Jewish heritage at our school and some antisemitism that I think comes from a lack of awareness," which inspired her to start a club to unite the Jewish community and represent them at LHS. The club is currently recruiting for their first meeting where they will be introducing themselves and celebrating the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. Speaking of club recruitment, LHS is having its first, its annual Activities Fair this Wednesday, where students are invited to sign up for LHS activities. Link Crew, the program that connects freshmen with upperclassmen leaders to help their transition into high school, is dedicating a day so all freshmen get the opportunity to sign up for clubs, sports, and student organizations during their lunch periods. New classes, such as data science and AP pre-calculus, are just starting up this year, with multiple periods offered due to the number of students who registered for these classes. As one of many data science students, we are currently working on a data visual presentation after gathering data over the last two weeks. Although it's only the beginning of the year, I can tell that this class will be very useful in the future, and it also allows for a chance to teach students about a new field in mathematics. AP pre-calculus students are currently adjusting to the AP style of math, as this is the first AP math class for many. Junior Sarah Abraham said, "It's a rough transition from Algebra II Honors to an AP math course because it's a lot of independent work without much guidance." But even then, she looks forward to this new experience and knows that she will learn a lot from it. Another new addition to the LHS curriculum, Spanish for Native speakers, offers a great opportunity for Native Spanish speakers to learn Spanish more deeply, like how they speak it at home, instead of learning it as a second language. It's great to see students experimenting with the new classes offered at LHS and see where it takes them on their academic journey. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Molly Neary, and I'm super grateful to be able to represent LHS this year on the school board, and I'm excited to see what this opportunity will bring. Even though school officially started on August 14th, many students began school-related activities beginning on the 9th. Juniors and seniors chosen to be a part of Link Crew, LHS's freshman mentor program, began training with icebreaker activities and learning the importance of peer guidance. Their training concluded with freshman orientation, in which they led their groups through a series of team-building and school spirit activities, building tours, question-and-answer sessions to help prepare them for the year. Since then, freshmen have met up with their Link Crew leaders twice a week to continue acclimating. Freshman Mary Minogue said she felt that the start of freshman year has been amazing. The LHS community has such amazing people to help every step of the way. Sports also started practicing on the 9th, while competitions began last week. Starting with the hype of the week, on Friday, we had our first home football game for the season. While our team played their hardest with wildcard productions capturing their highlights, the student section gathered wearing all orange in the stands. Section leader Bridget Graham notes how the cats really pulled up and brought their spirit, packing the stands and giving it their all. The team felt this electric student section, and they're excited for the rest of the games. Varsity running back Charlie Clark shared that he was very proud of how the team played Friday, as the team has a good base to work with this year. Girls tennis had their first home match as well, with many of the singles and doubles players finding success. The girls and boys cross-country teams competed across the street in Vernon Hills on Saturday, with the boys taking second and the girls taking third. The team hopes to grow their student section this year, made difficult by hosting only one home meet. After a very strong start to the season with a 2-1 comeback victory, varsity boys soccer player Oliver Allen shared that the boys are really looking good as far as bringing back the LHS soccer legacy this year. They look forward to their first home game Thursday. The LHS golf teams are swinging back into action as both boys and girls had multiple competitions and lots of accomplishments. Finally, girls volleyball had their first home win. Three-year varsity player Jamie Markort recounted the game, saying that it was so much fun as the cats brought a huge student section who brought the energy. She looks forward to playing in front of big crowds for the rest of the season. As the back-to-school excitement settles down, we look forward to all the greatness both freshmen and athletes will bring to LHS this year.
Good evening. My name is Louis Perry, and I want to first start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to serve in this position as school board representative. I'm very excited to work alongside you all and to share the valuable student perspective throughout this year. Starting off, I'd like to discuss one of the first events that occurred this year, which was the senior festivities on the Sunday night before the first day. The Student Activities Committee helped to bring seniors together for Sunday's A Sunset, which unfortunately didn't make an appearance, and just fellowship amongst classmates. Ella DiAmore, a senior, said, "It was a time where our entire senior class was able to get together as a whole. It allowed me to hang out with my friends and classmates I haven't seen in a while while talking and eating Culver's ice cream." It was definitely an exciting wake-up call for many that this would be their final year at LHS. The next morning was the Senior Tailgate, an unsponsored LHS activity where students show up in their senior shirts and have the opportunity to throw shaving cream, water balloons, and just start the year with an exciting memory. Mia Colton, a member of the Student Council Executive Board, said, "I felt like it was a celebration of how far we've come and the beginning of our class taking on traditions that come with senior year." She also said, "Looking to the future classes, I hope the juniors in the grade below us are as excited as I was looking to the seniors that came before me." Another activity that started very quickly the first week of school was the theater musical auditions. The dance audition, which featured a short piece from a longer piece of choreography taught by Mrs. Brown, started right after school on the first day. Students, freshmen, and senior year came together for either their first or even their last musical at LHS. Junior Ren Fry, who will play a main role this year, said, "I like the environment at auditions because you can feel the energy of the group buzzing in the air. Everyone's really excited and nervous." She also said that her favorite part of the process is getting to show directors what you can do, and auditions at LHS are super fun. The dance audition was followed by two days of singing auditions, and then a callback, where directors had students come back and sing show-specific songs or read for different characters. Once the cast list was released over the weekend, it seemed like the show was finally coming together. I will also say, as a member of the cast, that I'm very excited to be a part of it, and I cannot wait to perform for an audience. Lastly, the hall pass and cell phone policy has struck many conversations this year from both underclassmen and upperclassmen. Although it has been a policy implemented at the school in the past, it is now being executed more strictly. Senior Jenna Badwy says, "I do not mind the phone policy, as most teachers are flexible with it. I understand keeping your phone away during work, and most of the teachers allow me to use my phone during free time." This phone policy is nothing new for many students, as they've had teachers put their phones in different holders for class to make sure they're focusing on their assignments. What seems to be the talk of the school is the hall pass situation. Sam Foster, a senior, said, "Personally, I agree with what it's supposed to accomplish, but I believe it isn't being done in the best way possible." Many students understand the reasoning behind the passes, but think there is a better way to implement it. I'm excited to have conversation with administration regarding this topic, how we can address it in the future.
Thank you, Libertyville, for those wonderful updates. I'd like to start off by expressing my gratitude to the board. I've been entrusted with representing the student body and look forward to contributing to the success of this board. Starting off, I'd like to recap the summer activities. Firstly, Future Business Leaders of America state winners attended the FBLA National Leadership Conference held in Atlanta, Georgia over the summer. There, they had the valuable opportunity to network with others, attend insightful workshops, engage in infamous pin trading, visit Atlanta mazids like the Coca-Cola Factory, MLK National Historical Park, Centennial Olympic Park, where they attend the FBLA-held block party, and Georgia Aquarium. After recharging at the Kandler Hotel and competing at the Georgia World Congress Center, PHHS students Cameron Keough, Sahana Kartavel, Emily Hoffman, Matthew Ju, Neil Modi Deschmucks, and myself all placed in the final round within their respective events. Furthermore, FBLA president Kandar Vedya shed light on club member experiences, with one member stating that FBLA had helped him and others to develop their presentational and professional business skills. He also stated he was grateful to be able to create relations with people from all over the country and with diverse perspectives and backgrounds. One common thing he noticed among members was that many of them met up with out-of-state friends that they had made through FBLA in the previous years. With that being said, on behalf of the FBLA team, we'd like to thank the board for investing in this opportunity of a lifetime, which provided many great experiences and context for high school students. While the summer was a blast for the FBLA team, the Vernon Hills class of 2024 kicked off their first week with the senior sunset, held and organized by student Kate Impasaris. Through social media, participants were encouraged to bring their friends, pets, games, and food to Century Park, where they later watched the sunset together. Many could be seen playing spikeball, laying in the grass, and socializing with their peers. Upperclassman Judy Haremath, who attended the event, said, "I thought it was a great way to bond with the grade and carry on a tradition that had been celebrated by many other senior classes, with it being a tremendous way to end the summer and start school." Many seniors reported similar experiences, according to a form sent out to the 200 attendees, in which 97% raved for similar events like Senior Field Day and Senior Sunrise being just some of the top picks. Additionally, student council held kickoff this last Saturday, in which nearly 800 ticket sales were made, and over 67 seniors participated in the lip sync competition. One member of the winning team Fight Club said that it was a thrilling experience to be able to come together with friends to practice and perform something funny and lighthearted for the rest of the student body. Lastly, the College Resource Center held a mandatory transcript workshop for seniors to aid them through a college application process that can sometimes be tricky for students. For many, this was a great introduction to the basics of what goes on into requesting a letter of recommendation and how to navigate the Common App.
Hi, I'm Rukie. I would also like to thank the Board of Education for this opportunity to be a voice for my student body. Dr. G, Ms. Herman, and Ms. Hessel, I'm so thankful for being able to communicate with you all and having a role in District 128. This year started out by welcoming the freshman class of 2027. Student leaders in VHS helped freshmen during orientation, where they got a tour of the school and had a chance to walk their schedules. Justin Malfe, an incoming freshman, stated that he felt very welcomed and was more confident due to his opportunity to walk his schedule and know where his classes were before the first day. Students also saw a change to the exemption policy this year, as athletes in fall sports, which started on August 7th, were only approved for exemption on August 23rd, causing all fall athletes to need to participate in fitness testing. Mr. McAlue, the head of the Physical Education Department, stated that this change in policy was due to 10th graders' fitness testing results needing to be reported to the state, causing the PE department to change their usual timeline so everyone could complete fitness testing before being exempted. Students are understanding of these changes and are adjusting well to this new policy. Additionally, the PE department also saw an increase in zero-hour gym enrollment this year, with many students being put on a waitlist, unable to join, and disappointed due to not being able to fit an extra class into their school day. Students are looking forward to finding a solution by working with the district to help further accommodate themselves. Finally, as the 23-24 school year starts, so has the new grading pilot. One course team of AP government has adopted the 4.0 scale. Brian Voss, a government teacher, stated, "Ideally, each student should have a similar experience in each class, regardless of the teacher," echoing the same sentiments of the pilot's goals of having consistency throughout grading. One problem that has been brought up has been translating the new grading system to our school's platform, Power School. Emma Roy Choudhury, a physics teacher, also expressed frustration with Power School, as the platform makes it difficult to adjust to anything other than the 0-100 grading scale. Mr. Voss hopes that the district can find a solution to easily implement the grading scale into resources. More so, many other students are excited to see this grading system in effect, with many reacting positively to standards being clearly stated in their coursework. Stephen Corny, the head of the Mathematics Department, also talked about the adoption of a new grading scale in math class pilots, which eliminated zeros, stating, "Choosing an equidistant grading scale, 40 to 100, does not overly punish students that fail at a standard. We want to give students the ability to recover." Freshmen in particular are very optimistic about the system, with many saying that the chance to be able to improve their grade no matter what is what is motivating them. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank the District 128 Board of Education, Ms. Hessel, Dr. Herman, and Dr. Gilme for this opportunity. I'm eternally grateful and thankful for the chance to represent our student body here at Vernon Hills and across the board. With that being said, while welcoming the brand-new class of 2027, current Vernon Hills High School students had the opportunity to welcome our transfer students. We hosted their version of an orientation in the same spot we are in right now. Just around 50 students and their parents joined us for a presentation by Dr. Young and Dr. Gilme. We had families coming from far places like Russia and China to families moving right around the corner in our neighboring towns. Additionally, the students and families had the opportunity to have a personal one-on-one conversation with the current VHS student to further understand what the experience as a student would be like. Following the meeting, the students, along with their families, had the opportunity to walk the student's schedule. This helped to ensure students would be comfortable on August 14th. Come the first day of school, current VHS students met with their assigned new transfer students in the lobby of the school. The current student escorted the transfer student to their first-period class and made sure they were comfortable within their class and their teacher. In addition to gearing up for the start of the new school year, the staff at Vernon Hills High School wanted to create a way to allow for more safety-- the staff at Vernon Hills High School wanted to create a way to allow for more safety while walking to and from distant parking lots. These are the lots adjacent to the football field and baseball fields around the Vhack, more commonly known as the junior and free lots. This change was implemented after feedback was provided regarding the current movement of students from the lots to the school building. The current walk was deemed unsafe as the number of students crossing the street and the large amounts of traffic caused numerous potential hazards. Therefore, the staff chose to implement the street that loops around the football field will be closed on one side, and only one will traffic will be allowed. Students now will have the ability to use the closed lane as a walking lane to walk to and from their cars without getting in the way of moving traffic. However, even with the change implemented, there has been increased traffic, especially after school. As a result, the staff and students are looking forward to initiating a discussion and potential plan for investing in a sidewalk. This investment will allow for additional safety for students while also ensuring personnel do not need to take additional time out of their day to address safety. On behalf of the students at Vernon Hills High School, who use these parking lots and routes daily, we sincerely thank our administration for the help and effort done to ensure our safety is a top priority. The enrollment for the 2023-2024 school year also saw some of the highest enrollment for the early bird classes. Enrollment was so strong in some of the classes, students were entered into a random drawing and the first 24 were chosen to enroll. The remaining 10 to 12 were moved to a waitlist if students ended up dropping the class. This record enrollment shows the strength of our student body and the potential need may exist for future years to have additional sections of these classes. Otherwise, there will be many students left disappointed and not having the ability to take these. Senior Natali Robles provided reasons as to why she decided to take an early bird science after experiencing the one-and-a-half-period science class during the day. She noted that the change allowed her to have additional time to eat her lunch, but also take a longer mental break from her rigorous schedule. Myself, as well as many of my fellow students, recognize the benefits of having an early bird academic class in one's schedule. However, we recognize the difficulty in trying to increase the number of sections. With that being said, we look forward to more discussions with all of you, board members, and our principal. Thank you all for your time.
I'm going to give you a round of applause for a very well-executed and thoughtful first board report. Thank you very much. I have a quick question. Don't want to put you on the spot, LHS students, but I'm curious. Have you gotten a lot of traction from your Instagram account that you created?
I think we're at somewhere around 70 followers, so we've got a good following. But we're excited to put some stuff out there, get some interaction. I think it'll be a good way to communicate amongst LHS students through just seeing what we're up to and the things that we do.
I'm interested too in seeing if the social media helps your engagement with students that might not otherwise know you or approach you to discuss something, so.
We also should thank Eli Kelly, our Director of Instructional Technology, because the Instagram account was created a few years ago. If you remember Kat Courtless, she was the owner of the Instagram account, and the students were unable to get access to the account. They met with Mr. Kelly. He did a bunch of work and a bunch of research on their behalf and got them access to the account. So just another example of our staff going above and beyond to help our students accomplish the things that they want to accomplish.
Thank you for letting us know about that, and thank you to Mr. Kelly. Molly, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that some underclassmen have come up to me in the halls, asking me if I was that board thing. And so even though they might not know exactly what it is, I do think we're reaching a larger audience than we would have.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Well, we look forward to continuing to have a conversation and a dialogue with you, and thank you for your willingness to go above and beyond for your student bodies. We really do value hearing student voice, and when we have decisions to make, it is important to us that we incorporate student voice, and that really, we largely rely on you for that. So thank you for your willingness to participate in board meetings and be a part of our work on behalf of students. Okay, moving on, slightly less exciting, two FOIA requests.
Yes, we received and fulfilled three FOIA requests, which are each outlined in the report to the board. And then next, much more exciting, is our summary of good news for the last several weeks. Vernon Hills High School English teacher Courtney Randall was honored at the recent DC Black Film Festival in Washington, DC. Her film, A Mind of Its Own, won Best Student Film. Her entry, part of her thesis work, was her very first film and was placed in the New Filmmakers Panel at the festival. Libertyville High School Ecos Club and their advisor Jennifer Khan received a grant to support their work restoring the Butler Lake shoreline through the Southern Shoreline Restoration Project. To prepare for a cleaner energy future and make necessary improvements to natural habitat and open green spaces, ComEd and Openlands awarded 25 one-time grants up to $10,000 each in the 2023 Green Region Grant Program. The winning grants will support nature preservation, mitigation, climate change, and, excuse me, mitigate climate change and provide safe habitat for pollinators and other wildlife. The winning LHS grant will help in replacing invasive plants with diverse native plants that are recommended for ecological importance to benefit pollinators and wildlife. And having went on a walk around Butler Lake last week, the plantings are doing amazing, and just again, kudos to the students and to Jennifer Khan for all that work. Next, D128 Communications Director Mary Todderyk received an Award of Merit for Distinguished Achievement in the category of Special Purpose Publications in the National School Public Relations Association 2023 Publications and Digital Media Awards for the D128 Strategic Plan Book. The awards were celebrated at the Enspur National Seminar held last month in St. Louis. Two more pieces of good news. We have the Marching Wildcats ended the 2023 Band Camp on August 4th, wrapping up a great week of rehearsal to prepare for the fall football season. The annual Band Camp Change Drive raised a record-setting $8,500 in donations that will benefit the Northern Illinois Food Bank. And finally, Libertyville High School Athletic Department and their second annual CATS Care Camp raised $5,000 for Make-A-Wish Illinois. During the August 4th event, over 200 K-8 students from the community traveled through six stations led by Libertyville High School student athletes and coaches, including lacrosse, soccer, cornhole, spikeball, basketball, kickball, and an obstacle course. More than 100 Libertyville student athletes volunteered to run stations and be group leaders. The event was organized by dance coach Keesha Dugan, cheer coach Erin Vance, and athletic director John Woods. And that is our good news for the month.
Excellent. Well, good job to the Libertyville Athletic Department and CATS Care Camp. That's a significant amount of money to raise for a very good organization, so kudos to them for that. Before we get to the consent vote agenda, were there any items that board members wish to remove from the consent vote agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we need a nomination, not a nomination, we need a motion to approve the consent vote agenda is listed, please.
Carmichael, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on, two items for action. I will turn it over to Chairman Batson to take us through items A, B, and C that came out of the Program and Personnel Committee.
Thank you. This first item is employment of employees. This is a list of employment replacements, resignations, typical of this time of year when things are moving to get our schools back in order. These came in after our committee meeting, so we didn't discuss them specifically in committee, so we didn't feel appropriate to put these in the consent vote agenda. So this is a list of items for the last couple of weeks. Bryant, any other?
It really reflects any changes since our PMP.
Yep, okay.
That current list.
Can I have a motion, please?
Drumkey, motion to approve the employment items that occurred after the PMP committee meeting.
Hessel, second.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Carol.
Benjamin. Oh, sorry, Benjamin.
Aye, I am sorry.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is Power School, a unified talent platform that integrates with our Power School system. Bryant, did you want to give a brief overview?
Again, we discussed this at PMP a couple of weeks ago, but we are looking to, currently, we use Frontline system for three of our platforms. So for our substitute teaching platform, professional learning for our staff, and then applications and tracking on onboarding for those that are applying for jobs. We would like to move away from the Frontline education platform and move to Power School. We currently use Power School for our student information system. Over the years, Frontline has not been supporting us or a lot of schools. Schools have moved away from Frontline for some of their systems. They might still be using Frontline for applicant part, but then they're using a different system for their substitution part. We looked at a couple of different platforms, but we felt with the way our system is set up with our student information system and Power School, that if we move these systems into Power School, it will help us, I think, make some of the processes that we utilize right now for teachers to sign up for professional learning and to get a substitute for their classes that it would incorporate into the schedule. So we would like to move to Power School, but in order to do that, because Frontline just effectively will, you know, shut down at the end of the year for us, we need to be ready to go for the next school year, and so we do have a ramp-up for Power School to get it ready to go so that we can train our own staff, train our teachers. And so we would look at trying to, for new employees, applicants, to have that system ready to go December. And then for our substitution professional learning, to have that ready to go July 1st. I know that seems like a far ways away, but we would rather do a lot of the backend work, get it set up correctly, and so that we can do some training for our staff second semester and then over the summer. And again, they're signing up for professional learning at the end of the school year, the summer, for next year, so we need to have everything ready to go. So that's our proposal. And I know we discussed it for a while in Program and Personnel Committee a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. It does seem to me that integrating into one platform should make some of the processes a little more efficient.
And I would note that, I'm sorry, Dr. Herman, did you want to say something? I noted with interest that over the long run, this will save the district money. So thank you for that.
Even better.
I also want to acknowledge that Bryant sought input from many ESP staff members who are the front-end users of these tools in terms of having them see some of the presentations from the different vendors, and their input was greatly valued in this recommendation.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Carmichael, move to approve the purchase of Power School Unified Talent Suite for the period of September 1, 2023, through June 20. This says 3025, but I think it's 2025 for a total amount of $47,715.49.
We're really going into the future.
Really looking ahead, yes, thank you.
2025, not 3025.
Colcarney, second. 2025, not 100 years.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? Not even 100, it's 1,000 years. Wow, that'd be a long time. Okay, hearing no comments. Could we have a roll call, please, Carol?
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the Imagine Learning contract. This is actually for the Edgenuity platform, online platform. So we want to have a quick, brief overview.
Good evening, Board of Education and D128 community. So back in May, we moved to utilizing a new online platform for our online courses that we began implementation and offer classes on during the summer. And we would like to continue to utilize this online platform for the 23-24 school year. And so as we use Illinois Virtual Academy and EdgeSeer in the past, this platform will continue to provide those online courses to students who are long-term homebound, students who may be in need of credit that is in line for graduation, as well as unique circumstances that will always be approved by building administration. So the invoice is listed below. I believe it is a little bit over $6,000. We have to, the difference between this platform and the two platforms that we utilized before is that the students would pay upfront in order to take the classes. In order for us to use Edgenuity, we would have to pay for those services upfront, and then the students would pay us back. It is a cost savings at this time. Usually, we would budget for $13,000 in this area, district-wide, for courses. And right now, we are, as I stated earlier, about 6,000. When we use IVS and EdgeSeer, the costs for those courses for students were $299, and for the Edgenuity courses, it'd be $125 a course. So this is just the recommendation for us to move forward with approval for that contract.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion, please?
Rooney, motion to approve the purchase of Imagine Learning's Edgenuity online learning platform for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $6,600.
Hessel, second.
Any further questions, comments? Again, we discussed this in committee earlier in the month, so can we have a roll call, please?
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That concludes the items that came out of the Program and Personnel.
It is with pleasure that I turn it over to Chairperson Rooney for our items that come out of Facilities and Finance.
Item D, bid approval for a truck purchase. This is going to be one very hard-working vehicle. Any comments? We discussed this at length in.
We'd like to buy a truck. This is the truck we'd like to buy. We bid it out, and so the supply chain is really difficult, so this is the truck. It is more than we would want to spend on a truck, but it's not much we can do about it.
Any comments?
Hessel, motion to approve the bid for the purchase of a truck from Coons Auto Group, Antioch, Illinois, for the amount of $74,812.26.
Carmichael, second.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, let's get a roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes, and that would be the one item from Aphenoff.
Yes, so moving back to the agenda under 4E, we have discussed Superintendent Herman's annual goals at length. This is a draft that I believe captures all of the information that we are hoping to hold the superintendent accountable for for this school year. It is an ambitious list. I know her team will be hard at work supporting the goals that have been outlined here. Did you have any comments you'd like to make about this?
No, just to again thank the board for our conversation two weeks ago where you made good suggestions on clarifying some of the terms and adding some clearer metrics, and I appreciate that, and all of those changes are reflected in the document that I shared with you on Friday.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Batson, move to approve. Batson, move to approve the superintendent's goals for the year, school year 2324.
Do we have to make a motion on this?
We decided that we were going to, yes.
Yeah.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
I just want to comment, while the goals and everything are very clearly laid out, I appreciate the second page of this, it really outlines all the terminology, all the acronyms, that kind of thing, that clearly, you know, it helps put into context the comments above, so I appreciate that.
Good point.
Myself as well.
Yeah. It's something new that Dr. Herman included this year, and I think is to echo your, amplify your comment. I think it's very helpful.
I think it's also great that it's very public, so anybody can look at this.
Yes, after it's approved, it will be posted on the district webpage tomorrow or Wednesday. We'll see what we can do. But yes, it will be posted under the superintendent's page, and I think Mary has one other place we might put it, but maybe board as well, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the superintendent's 2324 goals? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Kocarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin. Benjamin.
Sorry, I'm having a signal issue, I think, but aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for the very good work on that. Moving on to items for discussion, I will turn it over to our Director of Communications, Mary Todderek, for discussion of the draft of the D128 Strategic Communications Plan.
Thank you, Lisa. It's been a busy month putting together all of the information that we received in the report from our communications audit that we had at the July meeting. And I've provided a draft of the plan. I'd like to give a little bit of background information for anyone who's listening that may not be familiar with the process that we underwent last spring. We contracted with a strategic planning group known as Just Galka Termin, and they did a full analysis of everything that we do in terms of communication, the tools that we use, the audiences that we reach, just a full-blown analysis of everything. And they came to the meeting, oh, and I'm sorry, I should add, they also did a survey of students, parents, and staff. They did focus groups, and they did interviews. So they took all of that information, came back to the July board meeting, and provided us with recommendations for the plan that we're going to look at tonight. The audit recommendations, as you can see on the slide, there were eight main recommendations. The number one being improving internal communications. They referred to this as a tale of two cities, because in their research on the district, they found that while our parents and our students were generally very happy with the communication that they received from the district, the staff felt very differently. So they wanted us to, they wanted us to put a lot of emphasis, time, and resources into improving our internal communications. The other recommendations that they shared were developing tools and templates for committee protocols, developing the strategic plan that we're talking about tonight, looking at tone, voice, and content in terms of our communication, and making it more personalized, more genuine, especially to our staff, looking at our media relations, our social media, our website, and having an additional support for communication. So with the information that they gave us from those recommendations, we developed three goals that would be in our communication plan. The number one goal, of course, being enhanced, effective, and internal communication. And with this goal, we, by the end of this school year, want to see that our overall ratings by staff of our communication efforts have moved into the high satisfaction level. The district will survey the staff based on a five-level rating for assessing employee satisfaction, and that is a common tool that is used by employers, and it's also been recommended to us by Just Galka Termin. Some of the strategies, there we go, strategies for that goal are enhancing the use of our staff Intranet, which right now is kind of a warehouse. If you go to the staff Intranet, there's lots of information there, but it's all just kind of there, and it could be used a lot more, it can be made a lot more friendly, more organization, make it a place that people really want to go to for all of their communication needs on staff, developing systemic tools for the communication efforts for staff, and consolidating and revamping our staff communications. So not only making it more friendly, more, you know, a more friendly voice, but making it less cumbersome for our staff. So you're not getting 20 emails in a day, you're getting them in a different packaged format so that it's your inbox as a staff member, that doesn't become your archive that you have to search through for all of your communications. Our second, excuse me, our second goal. Oh, sorry. Our second goal is to develop a D128 Strategic Communications Playbook. And a playbook is something that a lot of districts have that we've, we've received some exemplary, exemplary examples, is that a, of how to put this together, so that everyone in the district understands how our communications works, what our strategy is, who does what when they do it, what the template is, what the tool is that you use. And so that the strategic playbook would make everyone a part of the communications, which truly, I mean, I have the title, but really, the communications effort of the district is everyone who works here. So the strategies for that part of the plan, are to, thank you, John, establishing D128 communication protocols, developing an editorial content calendar and communication schedule so everyone who does newsletters and communication knows what different themes of the month will be, what deadlines for different publications will be, and, you know, what everyone else is doing, coordinating our efforts, and developing guidelines for major rollout of major district announcements. And that was something we, we heard loud and clear during the focus groups and the surveys from staff last year, that they weren't always sure who was speaking for a rollout, what, what feedback was needed, what, what the whole process was going to be. So we're going to work on making that a more strategic goal. And number three, thanks, John. Our third goal is to enhance and rebuild the D128 websites. And our goal there is by the end of the 2425 school year, we'll have an updated look and user experience for the websites as evidenced by a greater excellence rating in an end-of-the-year survey of our users. And the strategies for that goal are to refresh the look and navigation of our website, do a, ultimately do a full redesign of the website, explore reinstating a D128 mobile app, and consolidating D128 communication platforms similar to what we were talking about with frontline and different things. So all of the different pieces will maybe play together a little better and be more cost-effective for the district. Thanks. For the evaluation of the plan, we will be doing things throughout the year to sort of benchmark where we are with staff regarding communication. We'll be doing some mid-year focus groups with staff, talking about the communications that, changes that we've implemented at that point to see how we're doing with them and what impact those are making. We recently contracted with Qualtrics, and we want to use that platform as a tool for ongoing methods of communication and tracking and dashboards, and, you know, so everyone knows where we stand with communications. And we will analyze those findings, adjust the communication plan, and share an update with the board in July of next year so we can move forward. The, the years on this current plan align with our strategic plan because it will be supporting that plan as well, obviously. So we will be adjusting that throughout the span of the strategic plan. And there were four things I just wanted to mention briefly that, that they talked about, excuse me, Just Galka Termin talked about. In order to free up time so that new things can happen, and we're not, we're not able to hire someone immediately as a support for the communications department, we are pausing Twitter and the podcast. They would like us, they recommend that we are still proactive with media relations, but not putting out any more proactive story pitches than we, we already do. Making e-pop prints either bi-weekly or monthly so that it's, it's not only consolidating, but it's one less thing that people have to look at every week. And laying the transfer of overseeing the content of the website from the IT department to the communications department. The plan that I gave you has all of the nitty-gritty 15 pages of details, and I did not want to read all of those to you tonight. But if I can answer any questions on anything, I'd be happy to.
Just a procedural note, will you put this presentation in the board packet so that it's available?
Absolutely.
Because it's a really nice summary, especially of each goal and the bullets that come under each of those three goals.
And yes, I will.
Thank you.
When will the staff start noticing changes?
Tomorrow. We are working, the, one of the pieces that we were charged with improving is the Board Highlights publication that goes out. So they will see that tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, but we're hoping for tomorrow.
Soon?
Yes.
Okay. And then how are you getting feedback from staff on how things are going? Like, I know you're going to survey them in the fall, but you're going to be talking to staff along the way.
Oh, absolutely. The plan is to do some focus groups, maybe mid-year, once we've had a couple of months, to put some of these things into place so we have something to ask questions about. And then at the end of the year, we would do another survey. And I see us also maybe using Qualtrics as a method of developing a feedback piece where people could just continually tell us what they're thinking.
Right.
And people are telling me what they're thinking in a really good way. They, they seem very appreciative that we're looking into this, and I've had several teachers reach out to me and give me ideas, and it's been good.
I think one other place, a channel for us to get feedback and information would be at our monthly Labor Management Committee meetings also. Just in general, the areas in which the staff would like more information or maybe some things are unclear, that can be brought to our attention there, and then we could make sure we share that with Mary.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Very happy to...
I thought I didn't already...
Yes, please.
And I also...
If you could give an update sort of more regularly, it sort of said we'll get an update in a year if there is an opportunity to give an update on just how things are going. That'd be great. And just an idea here is, you know, and at work, I also get lots of information published, and more often, we end up just put it in, into a folder, and they will read it and never really do. If there is a way for people to sign up for what they are interested in, maybe it'll be a more personalized view of information they get versus a blast of stuff everybody gets.
Oh, so a subscription, sort of?
Yeah.
I can definitely look into that. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments before we move on?
I would just like to encourage the student board reps to read over the report that highlights some of the things that the students who participated last spring said were doing well, and some other things that they may have said could be improved, and you could build upon that in working with our communications department, you know, to making it yours. That's one of your roles, is to be a good conduit for student voice and to give us feedback on our communication. So you're invited to please continue to build upon that feedback.
And may I add one more thing? I'm sorry, that, that reminded me. We talked about crowdsourcing information the last time we were here. And I met last Friday with a journalism class here at Vernon Hills, and I'm hoping to meet with Libertyville as well, to talk about how we can work more with the student newspapers. And also, we're looking at some systems that allow anybody to, more streamlined, go into a system and feed information to us so that we can approve it and share it out or do different things with it, so.
So would an example of that be like a student has some project that's going on in the classroom, and they're able to document that and share it with you so that you can edit for whatever you need to do? Same with a teacher, if they wanted to talk about what was going on in their classroom, they could also provide that information.
Exactly.
Or a sports team, whatever it might be.
But this system that we're looking at actually monitors it and gives me alerts. It's, it's much more advanced than getting a Google form where people are, you know, I have to go check on it, and...
Sure.
So, more to follow.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Thank you very much, Mary. Very exciting. Next on items for discussion, item B is the fiscal year '23 site-based expenditure reporting, and I will turn that over to Dan Stanley.
What I have attached for you is our fiscal '23 site-based expenditure reporting. So back in 2019, school districts were required to report out expenditure per pupil based on the building that you're in. It was meant to highlight differences, particularly in some school districts across the nation, there were massive differences for reasons that are not easily explainable. And so we were in that same boat in terms of having to fill this out and figure that out. So I've included that report for you. For the district-wide, we're at about 28,000 to 25 per student, and then it breaks out between the, the three buildings. For Vernon Hills and LHS, that's something we've been watching over the last couple of years. Vernon Hills is more than LHS by about $881. When I dig into the, the details of why that's different on a per-student basis, there were really four areas that popped that had a meaningful impact on the number. There's a, probably a million little reasons, but the, the major reasons are included in the report. Two of them, the first two, were the largest reasons, and they were the largest reasons last year as well. And so they probably will be the largest reasons for the foreseeable future. The first is, two high schools have different student bodies, size student bodies. Call it 1,400 at Vernon Hills, 1,800, 1,900 at LHS, but the same number of principals, for example. So we both have a principal. We're not going to have a .23 principal. That's just not how it works. So the same bill, same number of building administration at LHS versus Vernon Hills, but there's less students. So the dollar, the dollars that we spend per administrator, per student is higher here. But that was known and actually intentional from the day Vernon Hills was born. And so that, that exists to this day. The second one is transportation. More, there are more bus routes at Vernon Hills, and more students ride the bus at Vernon Hills. One, one example is, this is a corporate park that is in, and so there's not a neighborhood people can easily walk to. LHS is right in the middle of a neighborhood that has an impact, I'm sure. There's two other reasons that were new this year that did, that popped this year that, that I did not notice in the data last year. One is that for fiscal, so this is last school year, there were more FTE for PAWS and freshman transition programs at Vernon Hills versus the PAWS and Link Crew programs at LHS. These are programs supporting students that need some more help. And with more FTE at Vernon Hills versus LHS and less students at Vernon Hills than LHS, that added to the math. And then classroom aides. At Vernon Hills, there were more ELAids, World Language Lab Aid, and then PE and lifeguard aides at Vernon Hills than at LHS. And same reason, more FTE but less students has the impact on those numbers. So we're seeing that difference in Vernon Hills, and, you know, it's, I think it's a debate about whether... So we're seeing that difference in Vernon Hills and you know, it's, I think it's a debate of about whether what should be appropriate or what, but that's what the numbers are. And so what we've seen is a progression over the last few years of slightly more money being spent at Vernon Hills. Which if you look at the needs of the student body, does that make sense? Yes. Are we, we don't know when we'll be done, but we're continuing to move in that direction. So that's the comparison between Vernon Hills and LHS that we've been looking at for several years now. A new one was transition pathways. So that was new. Never reported that before as a site, wasn't sure how the numbers were going to show up. But we did have those numbers now and so that showed up at just under $46,000 a student. Which is notably higher than $28,000 a student. And so for me at that point, I wanted to know two things. One, how, how does this compare to what we expected to happen? And then two, like how does this compare to other districts that have programs like this? Are we in the ballpark or how? Give me some context to it. So in terms of answering, how did we compare? When we, when we built the model for the transition program taking back two and a half years ago. We didn't do it on a per-student basis, we did it on the whole program. So we were comparing 1.15 million to just about a million dollars. So I didn't have a per-student, that was not in our frame of mind. However, we built it based on 20 students. And so I can do simple math like that and realize that that math would have worked out to be about 49,000 or just under $50,000 a student. So that's more than what we ended up at. So on that level, that makes sense. But another thing that's interesting is the site-based reporting includes the actual costs associated with that site. Plus taking central office costs and splitting it evenly amongst the buildings. So for every dollar that we spend, or for, for every, yeah, for every dollar that we spend. Not for every dollar, for all of the dollars that we spend on a per-student basis at a particular site, for each site we add, for each student. We had $5,400, $442 for the, the share of the cost of the district centralized services. Because you have to report all of your expenditures on a per-site basis. And so district office is not a site. It's based on the educational location. So if you take that away, really the site-level expenditures for transition pathways was 40,489. Which is even lower. So that, that is, that is data that's showing it's less than what we had originally anticipated based on. And it was different. We based it on 20. There's 29 students. So theoretically, the more students you have, the less per-student it will eventually become. And we're hoping there's a trend this year. So I think that number, I'm, I don't really know, but I'm guessing that number might even be down next year because there's even more students in the program this year. And then in terms of comparing with other districts, that was a little tricky because I've never really looked at that comparison before. Kelly was fantastic, Brian, not so much in helping me. In helping me find districts.
That can't possibly be true. Thank you.
That was for you, Kelly. Finding, finding districts that had similar programs, a, a program that was at a different site that actually reported that information separately. So on site-based reportings, if, if you, if you, actually if you go to our report card, part of the reason we're sharing this too, because this information ends up on our public report card. So I want you all to know this. We're actually not required to do this, but I want you to know it. If you go on our report card, for, for multiple other districts, sometimes the schools there don't necessarily match site-based reporting. And so it's, sometimes it's not easy to find other districts with schools like this. So Kelly knows a lot of these districts, was able to point me and then I had to just kind of click through and like just manually look up districts myself to see what had separate sites. Some said they had a separate site, but it wasn't, wasn't separated in terms of site-based report. Like Nutria just started a transition program last year, just like we did. But they didn't have different site-based reporting for it, based on their decisions, you know, whatever they made, that decision at the district. So we gathered as many districts that we could to find this out and then to realize, okay, some of the, some of the dollars is tricky per student. Because we, we spend per student very different to some of these districts that are on this list, like Round Lake, for example. It's not a very apples-to-apples comparison. But the difference between what do they spend for their transition site relative to the overall district? That I think is worth looking at. And so I found on average, it's about 200%. You saw people, districts that had a special site relative to their district. And for us, that was, we were at 162%. So that to me felt like we were below average of what I saw. So those are the two data points that I saw that felt, made me feel pretty good in terms of what the dollars spent ended up being. I mean, obviously we're interested in the best program for our students and it's also helpful that the numbers are working out the way they are.
I found that chart very helpful.
One quick maybe observation or question couched in an observation that things like number of EL aides at Vernon Hills versus Libertyville have more here. The assumption is it's based on student need. Same way with some of these other things. It's, it's based on student need, not just pure headcount.
And the demographics of the community.
Yeah.
And I recall, I think we got some grants of funding also to, for students that were below a certain poverty level, I thought. Right? Which was.
Oh, the Title I.
You're talking Title I?
So we could use those for Vernon Hills, but not for Libertyville, just because of the number of students. So I'm assuming is that a factor in, in all of this too?
So it wasn't a factor in this data because we didn't hire that position until midway through the year. Now that we're having this position for the full year, I easily can see how that will have an impact on the numbers. But for 23, it actually didn't stand out yet. But I, I imagine it will in future years.
Students, do you have any questions? I know this is your first foray into student finance and so just want to make sure you felt comfortable asking any questions.
I was always surprised by the cost per student. I would tell my students, do you know how much it costs to send you to school? Like this is your job. So now I'm going to look at you through those eyes.
For other reasons, his students were actually really lucky to have him. Okay, anything further on the site-based expenditure reporting before we move on?
Appreciate the detail. Thank you. Thank you for the work on that.
It's a good comparison.
Good work as always. Thank you, Dan. Moving on to the capital project process. Also, I will turn it back over to you, Dan, for that.
All right, this one might be less fun. So we went through and completed in the spring prioritization of, I don't know what to, I can't remember what to call them, special projects, unique projects that people were requesting for us to consider. And then it was appropriately asked, like now what? We identified the three top projects to do and move forward. One, what happens to the rest of that list? And then two, like are we done? Did we ever do this again? What, what, what does an annual process look like? And so we spent some time trying to develop a draft of what a process could look like. So I'm putting every qualification I can think of in front of this draft. But I do want to give you something to see and process and get feedback on. Even DLT is still going to mull this over for a little while. To get a sense, our, the intention is to have a process that's transparent, that's fair. That then allows for mistakes to be corrected as well. And so, so I have the flow charts that I put together there for you. And it's separated by colors to give a sense of timeframe. So I'm just going to walk through kind of a draft of what that process would look like right now. And then, so I want to talk about the annual process and then once we're done with that, I want to talk then about the list and where are we at with the list? So part A, part B. So first in January, then this is really based on the ending, the timeline back in, actually should have started at the end. Keep the end in mind. The idea is for, when we were working through last year, a process for developing, developing capital projects. There were two important deadlines that seemed to happen. One is if we were going to do a, a project that lasted longer than one summer, we couldn't do it in a summer. That we really need to know if we're going to move forward on that project by June. For the fall, to start the following summer. And then the second one is the one project that were going to happen in a summer, we really needed to know about them September, October. The summer before so that we can get design workings, that we're out to bid in the right timeframe. That's the ideal timeline we did. And so everything backed up from there. And so we wanted the end in mind to come to the board. Well, before it goes to the board, we want DLT time to process this and go through that. And every single one of these steps, we haven't, there's more to flesh out. So we want, we want a lot of the time for DLT to do that. So that would happen depending on September, October for the board. It backs up to August, September. And then before that, before DLT can react to a plan, we need to, we need to develop a plan based on the information. And so that, that's how that timeline works. And then back to, that's on the short-term plans, the summer plans. For the longer-term plans, we need to know about that sooner in order to get the wheels rolling. And then once, and then they really can be on two different time tracks. Again, we want the board to see this and react to this in June. And so in order to do that, we need DLT to review. We need time for the plan to develop. So I have a couple of months there backing that in. And then before that, adding, adding the timing and cost, depending on, or adding the timing and cost to projects. So now I'm going to go back to the beginning. So at the beginning level, what we want to allow for is a process that staff can complete a project proposal, a brief thing, not like what we did for the more fancy project proposal. That's going to be more detailed. This would be something brief and we want to open it up and allow any staff to complete this. And then it would, at that point, go to a supervisor for approval. And based on that supervisor approval, what we wanted to build in, in terms of fair and to be able to account for mistakes or anything else is to allow an appeal process. And so if the supervisor isn't, isn't, isn't in agreement with that, it can be able to the next level, to someone in the building administration. And at that point, if really the building administration and the supervisor don't feel comfortable with that project, the sense we have now is that project would be done. But if it did, it would move forward to the next process and into the next layers of the organization. I'm sorry, I saw your finger.
Yep. I was just wondering, what criteria does the supervisor use to approve or not approve?
That's a great question that we don't have an answer to yet. This is a draft, this is a draft. But that's a great question that we want to answer. And, and same for every decision step along the way.
Yeah.
What is the criteria so that we have, we can be as consistent as possible? So then after it goes through the various approvals, it would go to a district committee to review. And then figure out what category it really belongs in. If it's a health and safety issue, if it's about asset preservation, so we need a new HVAC unit that needs to get replaced or something like that. It really goes into Mark's bucket at that point to plan that, prioritize that, understand that and add the different pieces of data that he needs, he needs to look at. If not, it goes through the capital project prioritization process, that process that we live through, that they'll fill out a fancier thing, we will, Kimmy will get together and score it. That would happen on an annual basis. And so that's the point that now we're, now we're meeting in, in there. So it's a process that roughly would take about six months to do. But it's something that in order to kind of back into the timeline, to have things ready by the time we intend to have them ready. This is an example of what annual process would look like. This is not in a final stage. This is not close to a final stage, but this is a draft of kind of what that process could look like on an annual basis. Did I say this is a draft? Okay.
Yeah, the color coding, that was, that was a nice job.
I used Roy G. I tried to, but I might have messed up the colors somewhere.
You did a very nice job. I think one other thing that when Dan and I were reviewing this was where does our existing list sort of feed into this? And so that might be one other question that you, is that part B?
Which existing list? The priorities?
Yes.
Yep, that's part B. So before I get to there, any other questions on part A or?
If a board member had a suggestion for a project. Would that then be taken up by a staff member?
That's a great question. We had a different noun there before and we changed it to staff, but I think a board member, like we don't pay you, but think you're about as close to a staff as you can get without being staff. So I think, I mean, that would make sense.
I think we have to think about how that would work because I, we have our governing protocols. And I'd want to be sure we reviewed that, see if there's something that speaks to that already. And if we want to either add or modify our board protocols to see how something that comes from, you know, an idea or suggestion from the board.
Right.
Either would be handled the same way or in a different way based on our governing principles.
Yeah, maybe it comes through the board combined, you know, maybe we discuss it amongst ourselves or something, you know, there's.
Perhaps we would discuss if we wanted there to be consensus that it comes out of the board and becomes. Because I think it's important to consider the fact that while we generally do arrive at consensus. We want to have a process where one board member isn't driving the ship because I, correct me if I'm wrong. But a request that comes from a board member probably is handled in a different way than one that comes from a staff to the supervisor from the building leadership that goes through that. And I want to be sure that we're sensitive to.
That's the idea of the question.
Yeah, good.
Like if we had decided that we wanted to have an administration building. That wouldn't come from a staff member, it would come from us. So how does that fit in? I am not suggesting that we build a, an administration building.
Example only.
Just example only.
That's a good example of what?
But normally we would, we wouldn't be.
We wouldn't be deciding.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be suggesting. It would be a recommendation that would come from administration. And I want to be sure that we're very cognizant of what the role of a board member is.
Right.
Versus what the role of the administration is. Because normally those type of recommendations come from admin and then we consider it as a board and we've got a process for that. So let's, in items for discussion, let's decide in committee, how we discuss this further. Take out our board protocols and decide if it's already in there, if it's something we need to address.
Good point.
That's a good point. Where I was trying to layer this in my mind is where is the budget timeline go versus this? Because you know, we have to look at. That'd be helpful when you kind of finalize this, because then you could sort of say, well, I need to make a decision by this time for this budget amount if it needs to be implemented.
Yeah. So really, really what you're seeing at the end of that, the very end of that process, the end, the, the October, that's really dealing with the, the next budget year. So all of this work will inform the next year's budget. That's a little tricky because we're like always in three different budget years. We're analyzing last year, we're living this year, we're planning for next year. So the way this process would run is in the middle of this process, we are, we are finalizing the budget for a different year. The processes overlap. And so at the end of that process, that will inform the budget for the following year.
Got it. So in the July following this October is when we would adopt that new budget. And then the July after that, this work would be done? I'm just trying to do the math there.
So the idea is that at October, we would, we would have a sense of what projects we're doing. So then from October through January, February, whatever, we're, we're building the bid specs, building out all the design and everything like that. So that in spring, we are ready to go to install. And really all of that money is going to be in the following fiscal year. That is going to be adopted by June, not July.
But I, but I do think I understand your question, meaning what is the cap for what we go out to bid? Like is it a $3 million chunk, a $4 million chunk? Like we have had a historical budget allocation that we present to you in September when we're giving our recommended summer projects. And so that is sort of pseudo-established ahead of time.
Yeah, at least like a rough order of magnitude.
Can you say that last part again?
Just the order of magnitude. What is it? Five million? Is it two million? I mean, we have to have some idea, I would think, before we.
Yeah, some of that is about developing the plan and like what constraints that we put on the plan. That's not something I could tell you right now. That's something that we would have to develop. Or is there a specific question you're asking me? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just trying to, in my mind, layer this timeline along with what we have to do on the financial timeline so that they both come together.
Well, I would imagine to your previous question, which was an excellent one about what standards our department supervisors using to accept or deny a project. One of those important ones has to be, can we fit this in our budget? Because if you have a, let's just call it a $20,000 annual budget and someone brings you a $2 million project. The conversation has to start there is where is that money going to come from? And so factoring cost into ideas has to be a part of the, the standards, I think, that are developed. When supervisors at the building level are deciding whether or not to green light a red light a project.
Yeah, I know that, no, I understand that. I'm just trying to kind of. So let's say this is October of 2023, right? And let's say all of this work was done already and in October. And let's say all of this work was done already and in October 2023, you came with a plan of, this is the project that we want to do. In which year's budget would that be and when would we actually do the work? Would we do that work in summer of 2024 or summer of 2025?
24, but it's fiscal year 25.
Okay.
So and actually every summer splits fiscal years, but most of the time for summer, we don't actually pay for the summer projects until after they're done. And we've confirmed that they're done, which usually is July.
Okay.
Is when we'll start paying. They'll start work, you know, right when school gets out or sometimes a little bit before, depending on what project it is.
But we would include that in the budget that we adopt for the next fiscal year. So we have the money to get.
Yes. So there's a lot, yeah, so to say it another way, there's a, a number of big rocks that inform our budget.
Yeah.
The biggest rock is the staffing plans. Those get developed and really get finalized in spring. Those are the biggest rock in, in our budget. There's also ones like textbook adoptions. We figure that stuff out before that. This would also be another big rock that's really figured out, that feeds into that process.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So we're not done yet, but we'll bring another draft. Not going to promise at the next committee meeting, but real soon. We're not done with this yet.
Did you?
Part B.
To part B?
Part B. All right, so I also included the list for you of, as a reminder, this was the list that we went through and approved. For the top three to go to schematic design, it's really exciting, the LHS cafeteria. We're supposed to get an estimate real soon, so we get a sense of really what the cafeteria looks like. To the question of, all right, we looked at the top three, what about everything else on the list? And I appreciate a board member bringing up a specific project. I would say the same question applies to what about everything on this list? What do we do? And to be honest, the answer that I can give you is that the amount of money that you have available to you is about, what was the number, 15 million? Is about $15 million that you can spend on projects like this that does not bring your fund balance to a level lower than your beautiful fund balance policy. That's what, that's what you have. So outside of, and that's really what we've remarked those first three projects for. We can't get the fourth done probably with 15 million. Because just looking at the math, that's over 24 million right there. So the only, that's the way you, that's the cash you have. That's what I'm saying. So the only other way that you can get any of these done really is you have to borrow money. And there's only a few different ways you can borrow money. And there's a few different ways that you can get that money paid back. So we would have to explore those different options. You, I'd say another thing that I would offer you is in terms of paying it back, you can pay it back using your current operating funds. So basically, just say you went out and you bought a new car. You have a new car payments that you have to pay for. It's not like you get a new source of revenue to pay for that. You'd pay for that of your existing revenue that you're bringing in. The same could happen for us. We would have to pay it out of the same existing revenues. Based on the financial projections that we had, that we would have had in the spring in our current budget, I would not counsel you that you have the capacity to borrow a meaningful amount of money to take care of these projects and pay for it out of your existing operating funds. I don't believe you have that capacity to do that. So at that point, you're left with really only a few options, which we can talk more about, but I'm not prepared at this point to be able to give you more information. But that, that, that's really where this conversation would head next in terms of looking at any of the other projects on that list. So that's what I, that's the information I have for that.
I thank you for explaining that. I think one other part of the question last meeting was how would any new ideas be incorporated into this? Because there are other ideas that are emerging as student needs change or as, you know, other programs and stuff develop. One of the things that we talked about is as new proposals would be generated, it would be scored using the same rubric and existing ones could be resubmitted if they wanted to improve their proposal. But that this would continue to be an annual list that we would continue to evaluate and making sure that the board would always know what is at the top of, of their list and that that could change annually.
I could see two additional sort of criteria as we move forward. One is sort of the length of time a project's waiting. You know, we, we identified a, something that we feel is a priority, but it just keeps getting pushed off, keeps getting pushed off. So there might be, not that it would change its priority, but just recognize that, you know, if you come up then five years from now with two projects, one's a brand new ones, one's that's been on the list for five years and they scored the same. I think the one that's been waiting should maybe take the precedent.
Gets a multiplier.
Yeah.
Every year that it's in the penalty box.
Yeah, yeah. The, the other thing is, is sort of Denise's point, as we look at this list next year, you have to sort of reassess because the needs may have changed. It may be, maybe there's some priority, something that increases its priority or decreases its priority, or maybe the cost dramatically changes up or down. It could be all of a sudden it's a lot cheaper to do X, Y, Z and so it moves up the list somehow. So I think that's, those are the two things as we now start looking at this as a year over year process that we may want to include.
And I will agree, Dan, I'll add on to your point that sometimes legislative shifts force us to prioritize something that was not, as it has quite a bit. I will say the flip side of that, hopefully we can continue pushing for legislation that provides additional funding for important things that individual districts will probably never be able to accomplish on their own. Whether you're talking about conservation, whether you're talking about school safety, whether you're talking about meals. There are things that even well-resourced districts like our own can't conceivably take on with the way that we are funded. And we have a finite source of revenue. So it's important to remember the, the two sides of the legislative coin forcing us to spend money that we didn't expect. But also I think we should have an expectation that we'll receive funds for things that individual districts, even well-resourced ones, can't really accomplish on their own without either some state or regional or federal progress legislatively.
I have one question or one idea, whichever way you look at it. But I cannot remember when you, when you look at these scores, do they include a calculation of student impact?
Yeah, there's a category of criteria that looks at the number of students impacted.
So I think when we are thinking about how to approve or which ones to approve, it will be probably nice to kind of add a column that shows student impact. So for example, if you spend $100 that helps four students versus $500 that's, that helps 100 students, it kind of helps us make that decision more effectively.
I think the rubric accounts for that.
The rubric, the rubric has that information, so the score.
Our rubric, that would only come into play if you had two proposals.
That were the same, yeah.
So this graph just shows the score, but the rubric actually has that information.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you know what we're looking at? Do you have on your screens that, okay, just wanted to be sure.
That's actually not in this packet. It's in a previous packet, but it would be a nice touch.
Yeah, I just didn't think to.
It was before you.
Yeah.
But as.
You were still here.
As resources like that, that we are talking about, that we are, like we have in our previous life, please make sure that you know that, like, or that you request that, hey, could we have a copy of that? And we want to make sure that you're supplied with that information.
Absolutely.
And that rubric is like how we determine what is a priority or what falls higher on the priority list as others.
Yes, for these capital outlay projects.
Yeah, sorry, for these discussions, I try to anticipate the resources that would be helpful. I can't always anticipate all of them, but you're right, I can, we'll make sure we send it to you as well, that you have access to that.
And feel free to.
It's also on previous meetings. If you go find a previous meeting, it's there still. It was all public, so it's there.
I might need a refresher to, so like a 35 versus a 33 means it's just in cost or it's?
Uh, so.
All of it together.
What I would say is we tried really hard to look at our criteria that took into account the breadth of things that we want to account for in our process. Students impacted, alignment to our mission, long-term financial savings.
Health and safety.
Health, yeah, we wanted to take into account as many of those things as we could. And so the score is, the resulting score was the best way we could figure out to do it in a fair way.
If you click on the left side, the blue.
LHS one.
LHS one, it'll come up, the whole score will come up.
Oh, yeah, the rubric's there.
So the whole rubric is there. So if you, if you go to the second sheet, this is capital project prioritization. You guys see that? Click on the left.
We don't have access.
Yeah, you have access? I don't have access.
Really?
I am. Well, actually, you know, I'm, I may need to be my other self.
Hold on, hold on.
Maybe you don't.
He's having an identity.
Sorry, it, it's not set up to, to write access to share, so I'm sorry. But if you go to a previous meeting, it's there somewhere as well.
But we will send it to you.
Um, I just had a question. With previous like renovations and aspects of VHS and LHS that we've spent money on, is there any report after that kind of like affirms the score that it was given to make sure that like the student impact that it had is still like variable with?
It's a great question.
It is a great question and the rubric is brand new. So we, we have not yet begun rating past projects to what it was rated on the rubric because the rubric was just finalized July, May, June?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just in the last couple of months.
So for example, the Libertyville pool, we had very good intentions on how many students it would serve. And, but we haven't formally evaluated that. And similar with the classroom addition here at Vernon Hills. You know, we have very good intentions on how many classes we hope that will support, but we haven't done that full circle. So I think your question is such a great one.
It's a new color in line for your flowchart.
So what was, sorry, what was, was there just like a prior rubric that was used or?
No.
So, okay.
No, it was done on a sort of a case by case project basis.
How bad somebody really wanted it, how shiny it was.
Health and safety was always prioritized and then capital improvements, we, you know, it, it was really more considered on a case by case basis.
And I think a lot of it was, we had so many very large projects going on. We, we focused a lot of energy on that and, and all the smaller capital projects, which these would be by comparison smaller, where, you know, you prioritize the health and safety types of things, the things, the urgent things that you need to get done. And these other projects like remodeling or renovating sort of got put, put aside because we were investing so much time and effort in the, in the very large, like the addition or the new gym or the pool at LHS, that kind of thing.
But we did see a need to have a consistent method of evaluating what needed to be done with our limited resources. So the administration developed this rubric recently based on a collaboration between the board and administration, so.
And to have a long-term path, right? The whole point is to see where are we going in the future? You know, what can we accomplish? We can't in U C. It's like your checkbook. You can't accomplish everything and making those, you know, making those decisions, but knowing where our path is. You don't even know what a checkbook is, do you? Just dawned on me.
Venmo.
I'm sure they do, okay.
Your Venmo account, you have all that stuff in Venmo?
Okay, um, is there, I know you were working on getting through item B, the capitalists for prioritization. Where did we leave off before we diverged?
So really, really just, if you want to explore what that could look like, I can prepare something for you, but you'll need to give me some time to get some information ready for you before we can kind of further that conversation.
Okay, anything else on item B? Any other comments or questions before we move on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a lot of work.
A lot of work.
Okay, moving on to items for information, Dr. Herman, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have two items to share with the board and the first is going to be presented by Dr. Gilliam, who has been working with the Vernon Hills Graduation Venue Committee for the past several months. And as he said he would do, he's back to the board with a few updates.
Back. So last April, our update to you was that we had formed a committee, as Dr. Herman just said. At that time, we had begun looking at what our schools were doing relative to graduation and also creating some survey tools to get out to our community students and staff. So we have done several things. If you recall, when we surveyed other school districts, we quickly realized there weren't that many other options in addition to graduating at school. And we were really the only school in the area that graduated indoors in a gym. Several other schools graduated outdoor, outdoors at a stadium. But most graduated at a different facility. We quickly, quickly realized there weren't that many other facilities available in, you know, a 30-mile radius of here. So it, it kept our work pretty focused. I want to update you on some of the survey results, just so you have an idea of what our students and our community and staff said. We asked really for two, we asked two, two general questions. One, what is your priority when looking at graduation? And then two, if you had to pick where we would graduate, where would it be? So I want to just talk about priorities first. Parents and students were relatively the same. And in each case, one priority category doubled all the rest. And that was the amount of tickets available for families. So clearly to the, to the students and to the parents, their first priority is can we increase the number of tickets? You recall that right now as a district, we operate with two pretty differing operations. Vernon Hills has had in the past anywhere from four to six tickets per family, but right now we're at four and that feels very tight. Whereas Libertyville has unlimited at the Now Arena. And then, and then their priorities, parents and students, were pretty much even, evenly spread out through issues like they wanted it an indoor facility as opposed to risking the weather, somewhere relatively close, relatively is a tough word, a date that was close to the last day of, of classes, the last day of classes, and somewhere that had somewhat comfortable seating, again, relatively speaking. Our staff, of course, they're coming to it with a different perspective. So while they're not thinking about bringing guests to a, a ceremony, they understood the importance of it, but still when asked, they wanted a venue that's fairly close to school. And then secondary to that, they really were interested in what the student preference was. And then a, a date close to the last day of school. They don't want to kick it down, you know, some, somehow a week after they're, they're kind of done with their responsibilities. So that was kind of the priorities, probably not a surprise to any of us. And definitely when we heard from parent, parents who came here, community members who came here, that idea of more, more tickets for family members was highest on their priority. So it makes sense that that's what we heard. We then just posed the simple question, okay, where would you want to graduate? And of those that had a preference, one of the options was no preference. Of those that had a preference, 86% wanted a venue that had more available space for students. And 63% of those wanted that an indoor facility. Because I think in my mind and in the mind of, of many, some of us in the community was what we could easily just graduate outside, like a lot of school districts do. But again, the survey would. of school districts do. Um, but again, the survey would indicate that more people would rather be inside and not fight the weather and not fight the risk of cancellation, which would be either a rain date or moving into the gymnasium like we did um three years ago uh for graduation, when we were planning to be uh outside for kind of our COVID graduation, and we had to kick it back inside and limit. Um, well, we we did it in two separate ceremonies, separated the senior class, and again, had very limited tickets. Um, so that that speaks pretty clearly. Um, we've done a lot of work then to say, okay, if that's if that's the direction that the community, the students um and the staff went ahead, what are our options? Uh, we quickly realized that around here, uh, relatively close means you have three options. You have the Rosemont Theater, you have the Now Arena, and you have Willow Creek Church. Um, each of those facilities has a lot of different school, has several different schools that that uh graduate from there. Willow Creek Community Church has two, Lake Park and Barrington. Um, we found out very quickly that the Now Arena, which is where Libertyville graduates, is packed. There is really no space. So the idea that we would have a graduation somewhere close to the last day of school, that that made, that's impossible based on uh their calendaring. Um, the other two um both have dates close to where our last day of school is. We toured both of those places. I observed graduation of Main South High School at Rosemont Theater. Um, several others from the community toured that venue with uh their head of operations. Many of us from the committee went to Willow Creek, didn't see a graduation in action, but saw a lot of, but heard from and saw a lot of the different um opportunities that we would have in that space, whether operational or space, both really great options. In the end, only one of those spaces has the date that we're interested in, uh, and the date that we've communicated, the date that has the least number of conflicts with final exams, a holiday weekend right at the end, uh, and that is Rosemont Theater. Uh, so at this point, we're moving forward with looking more closely at that um venue and trying to um, we actually have a contract in hand that we're looking at right now, and our hope is that we would be able to vet that contract closely and bring either a contract for that venue or uh perhaps Willow Creek uh to the next board meeting. But that's where we're at and feeling good about our uh progress, and the committee is excited to uh take this next step. And hopefully uh this time next month, we'll have a a contract in hand that we can share with you for approval.
So the question I have is, is it a different date and time than Libertyville?
Uh, currently, if we were, currently, it is this, it's it's just like we did last year, so it would be the same date and time.
Oh, darn. I was hoping to be able to go to both.
Okay.
So it's that Thursday.
That would be the Thursday, the 20th.
And just as a matter of procedure, does the board routinely approve the contract for the Now Arena?
That's a, that's a Dan Stanley question.
Uh, no. Sorry, I, okay, I got, I'll add more. Uh, so, uh, no, um, right when I first got here, um, our board policy allows us to enter into contracts that are budgeted. And so uh with the, when it changed to the Now, when when there was a material change in the structure of the agreement, so like they changed the date, like there was a time when they were different, and then they kind of were moved to that one. That's when we, and it was a multi-year agreement, that's when we um brought it to the board, especially because we didn't have a budget yet. And so we had the board approve it at that point. But after that point, it just became a contract that we signed pursuant to our board policy that, once it was budgeted and it was different, and there wasn't anything different, really, um, we 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 did not bring it to the board for approval.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
But you still want us to approve it?
It'll be new.
John said he wanted to. I didn't say that.
Yeah, I think we have to.
I'm just the principal guy. I don't really know what the that whole contract.
I I'm happy to consider it. I was just procedurally clarifying our process.
Yeah, I I would recommend for the board to look at this, especially the public nature that it's been.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So one more quick, go ahead, sorry. Uh, one more quick question is, seating-wise at the Rosemont Theater, I'm not.
Good question.
I don't remember it, but is it plenty of seating?
Yeah, it's it, it would easily double the seating we have right now. So we probably, graduating at Rosemont would still say to families, you have a a graduation ticket limit of eight, um, which is what a lot of the schools do that are similar to our size and graduate there, um, knowing that there's, even if they do that, there's there's space available. Um, if we graduated at Willow Creek, it would be unlimited. It would, we would treat it like Libertyville treats the the Now Arena. Um, there's that much seating there, so.
Do you anticipate a significant significant difference in staff participation?
So I do not predict a difference in staff participation from either of those two venues, but relative to the change in the venue, I I think we'll have fewer staff participate. I know our staff, they love these guys, and they will be there to support them. I just think by nature of, you know, traveling, if I live north and we're going to travel, you know, 25 minutes south to O'Hare, that's that's a different kind of uh commitment. So we we will lose some staff. Um, I love having our teachers and our staff a part of the graduation, and I know the students do too. So we'll do everything we can to encourage them to come, but I think we'll have, it'll it'll take a little hit to it.
Okay. What other questions or comments do we have?
Thank you.
Yeah, good work.
Yeah.
The second thing I wanted to share with the board is just a brief update on one of our, the first things we're doing to implement the state-required Accelerated Placement Act. We talked about that last spring as part of using data to make placement recommendations for students in the next um most rigorous course. And um, in the past, we have hosted the PSAT on Saturdays for our eighth-grade students coming in. And we've had between 90 and 95% of the students participate, which is high, but it's still not the 100% threshold that the state of Illinois is wanting us to use as placement data. Um, so I want to, again, publicly thank our partner districts who have agreed to host the assessment at their sites. Um, Charlotte Eames, our Director of Assessment, has been working with them since May to coordinate. Um, not only is it a switch-in venue, but it's also going from paper pencil to the online version of the test. Um, and also making sure that all the accommodations for students have extended time and things like that have to be entered electronically. So um, Ms. Eames and the personnel at each of our four um partner districts have been working over the summer and um are really making sure that we have the data that we need. Um, in terms of having consistent data, what we learned is that all of our eighth-grade uh students take different progress monitoring assessments at each of their districts, which is very good for them internally. S73 has a tool that really supports their um progress monitoring. D70 has a different tool. So what we will have then is data that each district uses as one data source to see is a student proficient or advanced, but will also have the PSAT, which is something that will be consistent throughout all of our partner districts. Um, so we feel really good about um having multiple sources of data. Um, and that we will have, we have strategies in place to make sure that it is 100% of the students, incoming eighth-grade students who will be able to participate. Um, but again, it's been a a large project, and our team has been working in great collaboration with our partner districts. So I just think it's when we have those kinds of agreements for data sharing and some of the other things that we wonder, when are we going to be using those? This is an example of when our K8 districts and our 912 districts are collaborating to make sure that the transition from middle to high school is smooth and seamless.
So the PSAT is still going to continue?
Yes.
And I know it's been 12 years, but I didn't know that was optional. As as sending two children to that. Where was it said that it was optional?
Oh, no, it wasn't saying that it was optional. It's just because it's a Saturday and transportation was not provided. For many families, that's a hardship. So by having it during the school day, so we anticipate having it, meeting that 100% threshold.
And then anything alternative, so they, now I'm not understanding, they're not, they're coming, they're going to do the PSAT at their house.
At each of their homeschools, yes.
Along with their progress monitoring data.
Yes, and that's, so we will, we will receive both sets of data. Um, one that's very consistent between the four partner districts and one that is unique, but will again be still comparing it to what ISPE requires, the proficiency and advanced um targets um for the Illinois State Standards.
We have a question.
Yeah.
Um, what about the PSATs that um are taken in high school by like freshmen through juniors? Because I, are those optional?
Thank you for asking. Um, would you like to comment also? Dr. Sanchez works with uh Ms. Eames in terms of coordinating the assessment and some of these placement practices? Well.
Yeah, those are not optional. ISB made them a requirement, I think about three or four years ago. So I'm sorry.
Are these also used for placement or no?
Yeah, so will also be used for the placement um decisions that we'll have to make in terms of course, course placements in January.
And same thing with the STAR tests, because they talk to, like, they talk to us about that.
Yes, we are also planning on using some of the, well, using the data from the STAR reading and STAR math to help uh with the placement uh recommendations. So um, we we will be looking at um not just one measure, like uh, the legislation says that we ought to use one that is uh like the state test or something that is nationally normed. And so our intention is to use the state test along with the STAR, which is nationally normed assessment.
And if students don't score as high as like they would have wanted to, to get into like a certain class, like that's still a recommendation, right? Like they would still be able to?
Yes.
Yeah, there would still be other opportunities for students to participate in an honors or an AP course. So I want to make sure all of you and anyone listening understands this is not trying to be a gatekeeper. This is actually intended to make sure as many students as possible, um, who maybe hadn't thought of themselves as being a candidate for an honors or an AP um class. Once they get that score data, we have to automatically place them in that higher one. And then the family can say, no, I don't want to take two AP classes, or no, I don't want this. But the whole point of this legislation is to try and make sure that every student understands how they're achieving and that they could be um uh potentially um taking on more rigorous coursework the following year. Um, but but we will have additional channels for students for whom standardized testing potentially isn't the way they shine. Um, and that will be developed with our school counselors and some of our other um uh assessment. Um, working with our department chairs and other things. So we, when we say multiple measures, we want to make sure that the, there's many opportunities for students to have access.
And so then, if a student takes the PSAT or the PSAT in freshman year and scores differently their sophomore year, would that, basically that program kind of restart in that evaluation process, restart then? So they, if they don't want to take the AP courses their freshman year, but they decide, okay, I'm willing to take them my sophomore year, they have the ability.
We, we want lots of on-ramps.
Oh.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify one thing that the PSAT for high schoolers, is that required or optional? Because I did get a parent email saying it's an optional sign up for juniors.
So I think that there's a a little nuance there.
Okay.
The PSAT eight, nine for freshmen is mandatory. And then there's a PSAT 10 for sophomores that is mandatory. We offer the PSAT NMSQT in the fall, and that is for the National Merit semifinalists. That is optional, because it's not an official PSAT test for college. So we don't um make our juniors sit for it if they don't want to. And sophomores, um, very, very few sophomores would would take that um test as well, because they don't qualify for National Merit semifinalist status. So that one we do as optional, and it used to be one that the district paid for, but we no longer pay for that as well. So, but the other ones are mandatory.
Great, okay.
There was one more.
Sorry, um, so obviously, there's a process for kids that um maybe don't place into like the AP or honors track, but uh want to like apply for it or request into it. Is there a reciprocal, a reciprocal process? Because I feel that there might be concerns um if a student like might feel demoralized a little bit if they aren't able to get into these AP classes, but all these kids that placed into these classes are able to easily like just drop down and like enroll in their, like their level of classes. Um, so I was wondering if there's like.
No, I'm I'm following you. So when you say reciprocal, is that um meaning students who choose to s- to take the honors class would stay and not drop down?
Um, I mean, like, if a kid has to fill out like a whole application or like go through a multi-step process to get into a higher course that they didn't place into, it might feel a little bit sad for them if they aren't able to do that. And someone that places into that class easily is just like, I don't choose that, and just enrolls and rather than having to go through also an application process to prove that they shouldn't be in that class. Does that make sense?
There isn't an application process. Um, so um, we could talk a little bit more about course selection maybe another time, just because we are getting to a point where the agenda's still in front of us, and we do have some more ground to cover. I'm not sure that talking about the the course selection process that students and counselors and teachers work on is something that we can tackle tonight. Okay?
But happy to have a follow-up conversation with any of you, um, and then to bring back some more information, because this is the first time we're doing the accelerated placement process. So this is new to all of us. So we are trying to make sure that we are opening doors and following the law without having any students feel like they're not capable or that we wouldn't value other ways for them to participate.
Yeah, and the whole point of the legislation is to open up uh higher-level classes for as many students as possible.
And it'll be a test for our new communication plan, so that everybody will get that appropriate communication, and we will all understand.
Right. Okay. Uh, moving along to our ISB report.
Oh, it's that time. Um, okay, a couple of things. Uh, one, it's just a reminder for some of the the meetings coming up. Um, we have a dinner meeting coming up in October 11th. It's held at uh North Chicago. Um, uh, the guest speaker will be the the Superintendent, Illinois Superintendent of Education, Tony Sanders. So that'll be a a very interesting uh uh conversation that we get to have with him. So if you would like to attend that, um, you know, the board members, feel free to contact Carol and and um sign up for that. They are doing uh, planning another legislative breakfast coming up in December, and I hear that you may be hosting uh again, which is a good thing. Uh, and uh, and then we're still working on the the March meeting. So uh, that's um, more to come from IASB. Um, the national group that IASB is part of, COSPA, COSPA, I'm not too sure how you pronounce the O in that, but uh, they're having their second annual uh national conference. This is a new organization uh that was created about a year and a half ago. Uh, it's actually led by uh the former uh individual, um, Tom Bertrand, who was headed IASB, has moved on to help form formulate this new national group. They have a national conference in February. It was March last year. They're moving it up to February, located in Dallas, Texas. And uh, I had uh talked to Lisa and Denise and uh mentioned that, you know, I would like to attend, but certainly open it up if someone else would like to attend on our behalf instead. That would be fine. Um, I think we have limited funding to send too many people to a national conference, but uh, um, just wanted to toss that out on the table and let you know that I was interested in doing that. And possibly even presenting.
Good.
Yeah. I would encourage, there's several things that this board is doing that would be models and that other school boards would appreciate learning from. I also think that it can be very helpful when an organization is starting new, like this National School Board Alliance, to try and um be supportive. Uh, and again, not sending seven people, but to send uh delegates and to make sure that we're supporting that national perspective on education. Um, definitely wanting that to be a strong resource for us in the future.
And I would sort of be representing outside, I'd also be representing uh the Lakes Division as my role there.
Your new role as vice chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we are going to turn it over to uh Kara Benjamin. Uh, she does have an important seat-all report. I know it's late, uh, but this is something uh very worth uh our attention. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hello, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Yes, so this has been a pretty eventful couple of weeks within the CEDOL world. And so I just attended a meeting last, last week on the 23rd. So this last week, we approved our annual budget. And then we also heard a presentation regarding a review of CEDOL's programs. So CEDOL's executive board had asked for feedback from various stakeholder groups about a year ago. And this included member districts in order to begin the strategic planning process. So the executive board and the district leadership team also went on to kind of probe the idea of the district's mission statement, which is this idea of exceptional services for exceptional students. CEDOL administrators also met with IASB regarding alignment with state standards and found there were some gaps and inconsistencies in the services we were offering students. So committing to dig deeper and learn more, the executive board hired a third-party consultancy group in January called Exceptional Learning Solutions. And from this point forward, I'm going to refer to this group as ELS. In fact, I may only refer to them one more time, but ELS is, happens to be another acronym in education. So today it's for exceptional learning solutions. So ELS came in to audit and assess, and they completed extensive onsite analysis, data analysis, interviews, surveys, solicited parent feedback, and then did some observations as well. And they also pulled some random IEPs. And for those of you who aren't familiar, an IEP is an Individualized Education Plan, to determine whether CEDOL is keeping these IEPs in compliance as regulated by the state. And so essentially, some major inconsistencies were found throughout the district. And there were a significant number of IEPs that were not in compliance. This is a major issue. But we have to remember that CEDOL has been through some difficult times over recent years. And so, you know, especially when we consider the pandemic and managing a group of students that were extremely high risk during that time, it's just been kind of this tumultuous era. Due to the district being in that ongoing somewhat operational crisis mode, plus the inability to fully staff all of the programs, it was determined that a major overhaul is required to address these issues. Luckily, we have a very capable superintendent over at CEDOL, Dr. Valerie Donan, and a capable district leadership team. But there needed to be a strategy on how to fill these glaring gaps and address these issues. So the DLT and the executive board have adopted a recommendation for 12 areas of focus. I'm not going to go into all the areas right now. It's a very lengthy set of objectives. But amongst some of these areas will be an administrative reorganization, hiring a safety and security coordinator for the district, revising the way professional development is done, and then revising behavioral systems within the district, plus the eight others. You can feel free to let me know if you'd like more info on those remaining areas of focus. And all of this, including the report, which is about 104 pages long, is available online. So if you're interested in learning more, you can certainly look that stuff up on the CEDOL website or even just do a quick search and it will come up with some results. So next steps for CEDOL, there will be teams formed for what's called SES, for the Standards of Exceptional Service, that will be, you know, provided for students in the future. There will be a firm employed for outside monitoring and accountability. And then there will also be constant communication to the board on the progress that's taking shape. So a lot of changes coming to CEDOL in terms of improvements. And I will keep you posted along the way. And certainly if any community members have concerns, they can reach out to me. They could reach out to most likely Dr. Herman, Dr. Ellis Bowen, or Kelly Hartwig, I'm sure would be happy to take your questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Kara? Kara, Kara, Kara. It's late, I'm sorry to both of you.
It's totally fine.
Thanks for going to those meetings.
Yeah.
Always my pleasure.
Yeah, we appreciate the information and the significant amount of time that you spend above and beyond your board member duties, being our CEDOL representative. And I very much appreciate you bringing that information back to us. I know that Dr. Herman, Dr. EB, and Kelly Hartwig are all very much paying attention to the best possible services for our exceptional students who attend CEDOL and use their services. So thank you for that. Okay, moving on, we did have another report, MD. I will turn it over to Don.
I went to an IASB webinar last Wednesday on artificial intelligence. At the end, they admitted that the entire presentation had been written by AI. They gave it the parameters and it put a slide deck together for them. The reason was to show what the impact of AI on schools is. And of course, lots of teachers have worries that students are using AI to generate their term papers. And so the question is, how are districts handling AI? And they don't have an answer for that. Although the ISB is currently working on developing a policy, a board policy for AI. A lot of schools are leaning in and embracing teaching AI and ethical use of AI, teaching students how to generate material using AI. And I have to, I have to think that that needs to be part of what we're doing. That our teachers should probably be leaning in also to AI. And maybe they are. I would be interested to see how an English teacher is handling that right now because these kids are going to be the ones who are going to be using AI in business. So right after that, I went to the airport to pick up my wife and I plugged in my Spotify and my Spotify said to me, hey, Don, I'm your AI DJ. I've gone through all of your music and I'm going to just start playing songs that you like. And based on that, I'm also going to play songs you probably haven't heard before. And then you're going to give me feedback. I was astounded by that. And then I thought, you know what? That kid, whoever developed that, learned it somewhere. So I would be interested at some point in learning how we are addressing AI. The second thing I did was I went to a webinar on the National Academy's Climate Conversations on Schools. I'll read just a brief bit from them. "Like all sectors of the United States Society, the K-12 education sector faces substantial challenges addressing its carbon emissions. With hundreds of thousands of buildings, hundreds of millions of bus trips, and billions of meals served each year, schools are attempting to monitor their carbon output, set goals for reducing emissions, coming up with some sort of a plan." Some time ago, Dr. Kalentis and I had a conversation about Sustainable 128. That's exactly what is happening in districts. And very often, it's driven by the people within the district. Either student groups are driving it. But one of the, what's his name, Shannon Oliver, one of the panelists said, he's the coordinator for a huge school district in Colorado, a sustainability coordinator. But what he said is, "The greatest successes towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions are coming from schools where there is advocacy at the board level." So I would just like to say, I think that we are probably in agreement that we want to be part of a global solution and that we should hopefully start looking for ways of monitoring our carbon output, coming up with ideas for reducing that, making it a standard operating procedure. And I don't really know how to do that, but people are doing it all over the place. And maybe, Tom, we can, we can go back to work on that and make it a district-level thing. I don't know how to do it personally. I have, I've done a carbon audit. We had Verage do an audit for us. Some schools have decided to go with trying to get LEED certification for existing buildings, any of those things, including the green schools applications that we've been doing. I would like to see us move forward, be more global, have very specifically stated goals, and try to reduce our carbon output as we go towards another 100-degree week next week. You got a question? You lit up.
You know it. And so this is kind of a question for you, Mr. Dan. And so, sorry. So basically, if we are trying to move towards a more like carbon-free or carbon like emission like reduction, would it be more beneficial to invest in a truck that is an EV? Because I know that also provides like a $7,000 tax credit, which would greatly help and also reduce our carbon emissions.
I don't know. What I can tell you is we don't get a tax credit because we don't pay income tax. So that wouldn't be an advantage to us.
They could handle that load.
But those are the questions that we, those are the questions we would want to be asking and addressing. And sometimes it is a matter of our behavior. Like we could do things, but it would be more inconvenient for us in a way. Other times, it might mean that the district would have to support an effort with an increased cost. Because, for example, right now, purchasing an all-gasoline truck versus one that has electrical capabilities, the electric truck might be more and it might cost more to install the electrical recharging stations in the short term and things like that. So those would be the types of things that if we were really intensively focused on sustainability, we'd be discussing and looking at. I do, Don, just want to go back to your first point about the AI. That's something that we are, D128 as a district, we are actually working on. We have a District 128 Artificial Intelligence Committee that has been formed. It is composed of teachers in each building, some who are very tech savvy and others who are very non-tech savvy, and some who are embracing AI and some who like legitimately fear it. We have our students representing. We have four students from each school on, serving on that committee, as well as members of our district administration and district instructional technology team. We'll be meeting over the course of first semester with the intent goal of bringing the board some recommendations, both in terms of how our acceptable use policy may need to change, as well as recommendations for ways that we think we need to educate our parents and students about AI and potential AI technologies that our district may wish to pursue and investigate further for teaching and learning and administrative purposes. So our work as a committee, John and I will also sit on that, Bryant and Dan, Yucinia and Temple. We will begin working on that September 5th as our first meeting.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, as far as the sustainability goes, we will have to figure out how, how we go about approaching that. For future agenda items, we did mention talking about our board protocols to address something. What did we just say? We were talking about board protocols.
Board suggestions.
Suggestions for Capitol product, right, right. Anything else in addition to the items that are listed? We do have one other report. We're going to circle back to the fore information. I'm sorry that I missed that. Casey, I guess it was for you in that I didn't.
You used to accept it.
I didn't want to go here, apparently. Now you see my real motivation.
As most of you know, I've been honored to be appointed to a village trustee position, an open village trustee position. So I will be resigning my position on the school board as of the end of this meeting. I was talking to Dan today and I told him, I'm not much of a long goodbye girl. I tend to favor the Irish goodbye, quick and quiet and out. But I would be remiss if I did not take this time to recognize the amazing group of people at this table, from my board peers to the district leadership team, to our awesome principals and our school board reps, both previous and newly installed. You have all helped me grow and learn in the last five years, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. We have so much to be proud of that we've accomplished in those five years, from getting transition pathways up and running, from our capital planning process that we've been working so hard on, hiring some amazing new people, and in particular, bringing Denise on board, whose incredible skillset will continue to drive our Daring mission into the future. This school, these schools are in amazing hands. And I truly believe that the strength of a community is directly proportional to the strength of its schools. And in that, I can rest easy because I know you guys have got this. And I thank you for all of your hard work, your energy and your knowledge and your commitment to the excellence of our students. Thank you.
We have something for you, a little plaque recognizing your very dedicated board service. I hope you will accept it with the intention that is given to you in recognition of the incredible skill and devotion you have poured into our district, both as an elected official, as well as all the years before, when your three kids were in school, and the countless volunteer hours that you donated of your time just out of not only wanting the best for your kids, but really always wanting the best for all kids, whether it was everybody at LHS or everybody in the district.
Some of the best experiences of my life, so.
Well, and I count being your colleague as one of the best experiences because you have made me a better board member. You routinely ask questions that I do not think of asking. And I think your professionalism and your collaboration are outstanding. And I, we will all miss you, but I in particular want you to know that I will miss seeing you.
You can't get rid of me that easy. It's not like them.
Well, and it's no coincidence that you're continuing to serve the community in this new role as a Libertyville trustee. That, that's very on-brand.
We know where you're meeting next.
That's right. You know where to find me.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I would be. I would be honored. It says, "By word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example to all." Thank you so much.
Go a little bit more towards the, there you go. Carol's in the background.
Sorry.
Want to get one with the whole board?
Yeah.
Yeah. One last one is a whole, the whole board.
Photoshop me in, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much, guys.
We wish you well. And before we move on, I would like to announce that Jim Batson is going to be moving over to the role of Chair of Facilities and Finance. And our colleague, Don Carmichael, is going to move into the role of Chairman, Chairperson of the. of the Program and Personnel Committee. So thank you to both of you.
Don gets the long meetings.
They used to be long meetings.
And we'll have an update on his continuing as the board secretary. We're going to talk about that. Okay? Great. Okay, so now I have a personal future agenda item. I did send an email to everyone in DLT and everyone on the board about legislative priorities. I really need some input. I realize it's one more thing for you to have to think about, but hopefully, within a few minutes, you can just shoot me an email and tell me what you think, what your opinions are, because we really do need to have some clarity about if we have legislative priorities and if we do what they are. So please, shoot me off an email.
I have a couple I'll send you.
That would be very much appreciated. Okay, any other future agenda items? What am I forgetting? It's got to be something.
Cupcakes.
Oh, yes, we're going to invite everybody to celebrate Casey's board service with some sweet treats.
That's on-brand for me.
I'm surprised you didn't make them.
If it was anybody else, she would have.
I literally have butter sitting on the counter, but today was such a busy work day. I'm like, oh. So you know, who knows? I may show up at a meeting sometime.
You are always welcome with or without your fabulous baked treats. So, okay, if we have nothing further, then it is 9:34. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Carmichael, move to adjourn.
Rooney, second.
I think, yes, we're doing a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.